Okay, hello everyone. We'll get the meeting started now. My name is Steve Stowe, I'm the president of CEC 20. Thank you everyone for joining us here tonight. For our special meeting to interview candidates for the open CEC position. I will now call the meeting to order at 6:03. Is the recording started Kevin?
Yes.
It is okay. And I'll take roll call attendance for CEC members. Okay. President Steve Stowe is here. First Vice President John Rickettoni.
Here.
Second Vice President Elizabeth Chan.
Here. Here.
Treasurer Mei Fang Chen. Mei Fang, are you there? Okay. Wen Ming Chen, Wen Ming, are you there? Yan Qing, I see you right there. Hey Yan Qing. Fabiola, Fabiola, I see you there, hello Fabiola. Let me just make sure I get all these. Maya Rosenblatt. Sabrina McNamara. Sabrina, are you there? Kevin Zhao, Kevin?
Yeah.
Are you there?
Yep.
Hey Kevin. Tamara.
Here. Here.
And Mei Fang, I see you there. Hey Mei Fang.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So just one last call, so the three that we didn't hear, so Wen Ming Chen. Maya, are you there, Maya Rosenblatt? And Sabrina McNamara. Okay, so we've got. Three, our attendance finished. Unfortunately tonight, I know we shared this earlier, but we, at the last minute, we found out we could not get interpretation tonight. So we apologize for that, it's sometimes that happens with the interpretation service. We do have. A Spanish speaker here and we do have several Mandarin speakers, so. If any candidates, when we go through and introduce you, if any of you would. Prefer to use, have someone potentially interpret your comments, if you would like to speak in your first language, just let us know. I'll now just take attendance for our candidates and just get. A check, take an attendance of who's here. And so I'm just gonna go through the. List, there's 11 candidates and I'm gonna call out, and if you're here, you can just say yes. And that way we'll know who's here and we can. Conduct the meeting accordingly. So first candidate Misba Chowdhury, are you here? Misba Chowdhury, are you here? Okay. Next candidate Sarah Cooley Cordara.
That's me, hello.
Hello Sarah. Next candidate Bonnie Doyle. Bonnie, are you here? Good. Sophia Lee. Sophia Lee, are you here? Alina Lewis.
Here, hi.
Hi. Ken Lee. Hey Ken, Ken is in the room with us. Nahlin.
Here.
Hello. Reem Nasawati.
Yes.
Hello, thanks for joining.
Thank you.
Jeanette Rodriguez. Jeanette Rodriguez, are you here? Neng Ying Shi.
I'm here.
Hello Neng Ying.
Hello.
And finally Mandy Yu. Mandy Yu, are you here? Okay. I just wanna ask if the, is, I'm wondering if. I'm just gonna do real quick, I think I saw some other people come on, I wanted to do a real quick through the names that did not call out, just to double check. Misba Chowdhury, are you here? Bonnie Doyle, are you here? Sophia Lee, are you here?
Over the booth.
Hi, hello?
Hi.
Hi, are you? Are you, are you a child of one of the parents, is your parent interviewing tonight or your guardian?
Yeah.
What's your, what's their name?
My name is Badja.
Okay. If your parent is interviewing tonight, can you please have them join the call?
Yeah.
Thank you, and when they do, we'll just. Ask them the same questions. Jeanette Rodriguez. Are you here, last call, and then Mandy Yu, last call. Okay. So great, thank you to the. Six candidates who are here. So the procedure for the interview, we will take turns asking each candidate a question. We will go in alphabetical order. And give each candidate two minutes to answer. When every candidate has answered the first question, we will ask the second question. The only difference is we will reverse the order, we will start with the candidate who was the last to answer the first question, it gives. It makes sure that each candidate has a chance to. Hear others answer a question before them. There are three people who will be asking the questions tonight. Myself and our two vice presidents, John Ricketton and Elizabeth Chan. And you should have all seen the questions, we emailed them over last week. So let's get started. Seconds. The first question, starting at the top of our list in alphabetical order, is for Sarah Cooley Cordara. And the question is, tell us about yourself and your educational experiences. This could include your own experiences in school. That of your children, or any work or volunteer experiences you have had in education.
Great, thanks Stephen, hi everybody, I hope you guys are doing well. My name is Sarah Cooley and I am first and foremost. A parent of two District 20 children, Jack who is in first grade and George who's in pre-K. And will be moving into kindergarten next year. I am a former New York City public school teacher, I taught for nine years, I taught middle school. And high school, science, ELA, math, pretty much I taught everything. I left teaching after becoming a teacher coach and I moved into the professional development world. Where I spent three years training and facilitating workshops throughout New York City public schools. And now I work as an education consultant. Through, in private schools throughout New York City. So I have a really robust understanding of the education system in the city, ranging from public to charter to private schools. And I think that I bring a wealth of knowledge to the district and think that my ideas and my experience could. Come in handy, so I'm excited for the opportunity and excited to meet all of you tonight.
Thanks Sarah. Next candidate is Alina Lewis. If, if, if anyone needs me to repeat the question, I will. But otherwise, we will just go to each candidate in order, but please let me know if you'd like me to repeat the question, I'm happy to.
Thank you Steve, hi everybody, so my name is Alina, I have experience with New York City public schools. From multiple positions and multiple times in my life. So all of those experiences, along with my formal training as an education researcher. Have informed my perspectives on education and in particular on public education in New York. So I was first a student in New York City public schools where I was lucky enough to have some really amazing teachers. Inspired by some of those teachers, as a young adult, I became a high school history teacher in Brooklyn. I was then a founding teacher of the Brooklyn Latin School and later served as the school's assistant principal. After that, I spent six years in teacher education, so I was teaching teachers earning their masters while they were working in public and charter schools all over the city. And then I was inspired by all of these experiences to go back to school and learn more about education, and so I'm currently about to finish my PhD. Where my research focuses on best practices in teaching history. In all that time, I became a parent and I have two young children in public school in Brooklyn where I also serve as the PTA president. So I've experienced our system as a student, as a teacher and a school leader, as a researcher, as a teacher educator, and now as a parent and a parent leader. I think seeing public education in New York from all these various angles has given me a real appreciation for the complexity and the diversity of the system and the communities that make it up. And also a real appreciation for the challenges inherent in working with such a complex and complicated system. But most importantly, I think they've all shaped my really deep belief that all kids and all families deserve access to a great education and I really see my job as a parent and educator and a community member as. Someone who should be fighting for a really awesome education for all of our kids, so it's great to see all of you, thank you Steve.
Thank you. Our next, and I just wanted. Okay, I see we have another candidate who has joined us, I see Mandy Yu, if any candidates. I'm gonna go through the list and as, as I see people that I think have joined, I'll just call it out. But if any candidates. If I don't ask you a question, we're on question one, and if I don't ask you a question, raise your hand. And let me know, but I see you there, Mandy Yu, so I know I'll add you to the list as well. Ken Lee is next for question number one, let me know if you need me to repeat the question or just go ahead. He's just getting his laptop set up, Ken, you're all set?
Oh yeah.
Two minutes Ken, go ahead.
The first question, right?
Yeah, let me know if you need me to repeat.
Okay, I'm gonna go really fast, simple, good evening. Ors, thank you for taking time to interview me. My name is Ken Lee, I'm the father of three children that currently go to three different school. With the District 20, I'm a. Education advocate for my trial and my community. Whenever someone need assistance. Whether it's school work. Translation booty. At, I am always from the center. And. Do I, do I continue for the next two question or what?
Just the first question.
Okay, this is fresh answer. Really simple.
Thanks Ken. Next candidate is Nahlin.
Good evening everyone, my name is Nahlin. I'm a parent in District 20, I have two young children. While I may only have a high school diploma, I recognize the importance of education. So I chose to be more involved with my children's education by joining the PTA of my kid's school. I not only help the school raise funds, but also to part in hosting events for parents and kids. I have participated in the school's PTA since my children were in kindergarten. And served as the co-secondary since then. I have received praise from our parents and the school for the work I do. I learned a lot through the process. And I really appreciate the personal growth I gained from this experience, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next candidate is Reem Nasawati. Reem, are you still there, can you hear me? Reem Nasawati. Next candidate, Neng Ying Shi, Neng Ying. And again, let me know if you need me to repeat the question, otherwise go ahead.
Okay, hello everyone, I'm Neng Ying Shi, I'm a mom of two children. My son is a second grader in PS 170 and my daughter is a high schooler in Stuyvesant High School. I have been a housewife for 17 years, I'm an immigrant. Many years ago, I went to a community college for study. It opened my eyes, since then, I got a chance to learn new language and knew no more about the world. I realized education is really important and it can make life better. Even though I'm not going to school now, I still keep reading books and learning new things from reading. My son's school is near my house, I'm a volunteer in his school now. Also, my high schooler's daughter likes doing volunteer job in our community. She's vice president in a nonprofit organization. Last year, she and her parent, and her partner gave a presentation at the 8th Avenue Brooklyn. It is about how we can choose a high school which is good for you, they share their research results and they share their own experience. She's also a volunteer in a young kids reading project. And I just learned from her that I can do more as a mom or as a resident in my, in my, in my community to get engaged in. Our community as a mom of two children here, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Mandy Yu. Mandy, if you'd like me to repeat the question one, if you need me to repeat the question. Let me know, or you can start your answer. And you'll have two minutes. You're on mute right now, Mandy, we can't hear you. Can you?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Mandy Yu, I have two kids in elementary school of PS 69. And I have three years of PTA president and two years of Title I chairperson and I am still the title. This is my last year of Title I chairperson. And I have lived in District 20, the community of 30 years. And I would like to help the parents. And the school. And I want to be the bridge of them and I would like to helping the community a lot. And I like to helping the parents when they need, when they need me. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've just finished question one and I. I'm just wanna make sure if there are any candidates that have joined the meeting. That I didn't, that didn't answer question one, can you please raise your hand or. Or you can unmute and speak, I just wanna make sure we got everyone that's here, I think we did. Okay. So let's go to question two, and for question two, we're gonna go to our Vice President Elizabeth Chan.
Hi, so is Reem not here today?
I believe not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will start the second question for Mandy Yu. Question number two. Why do you want to be on the CEC 20? Why do you wanna be in our CEC, Mandy?
I want to be more. I want to. The bridge with the parents and the school and the community and I would like to help. The, I want to be. Help the community a lot. I like to help people.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Okay, Neng Ying Shi. Same question to you. Why do you wanna be on CEC 20?
Hi, why I want to be on CEC 20, I was inspired by many parents I met in my daughter's middle school a few years ago. They work hard together to help the school process smoothly. They fight for our children's education opportunities such as SHAT tests, talented program, etc. My two children are going to school now, I have more free time to contribute to our community just like the parents I met in my daughter's middle school. Since I'm a volunteer in my son's school, I have many opportunities to meet other parents and know each other. I find there are so many parents caring about their children's education. They are so passionate doing volunteer job in school, but they do not know enough information about education policy. For example, at the beginning of the semester, a family applied for free after-school program, I heard many parents say. My, my kid does not get a select by this free program. And they complain about there were less seats in the free program this year, but they did not know why. I just think if I could join CEC 20, I might have chance to get a more relative, related information directly. Or get something to do, that's why I want to try my best to, to get a, get myself helpful, thank you so much.
Thank you, same question to you Nahlin.
Hi, CEC is a very important platform that around us as parents to. Advocate for quality education and academic answers for students. My understanding is that CEC will have direct communication with schools on a district level. On subjects like policy change and resource allocation among others. So, I'm hoping this platform will around me to. Help kids. I'm really happy to have this opportunity to be considered for the role.
Thank you. And you're done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, alright, same question to you Ken Lee, if you need me to repeat it. Ken Lee, hello.
Yeah, I'm here.
Why do you wanna be on our CEC 20?
I can't hear you. Second question, right?
Why you want to be on the CEC?
This is why, why, why do I to enjoy CEC 20, about last year. The bully incident at the PS 201, I formed a group and we have peaceful protest. And I also was the movement in, in the after-school protest for District 20, after-school. Being defunded and so we. Peaceful protest and well. Interviewed by reporter and I happy to stay with the help of CEC 20. In a community, we found a good fight and. Didn't give up. Always fight for the District 20 and our community, thank you.
Thank you. Hello Alina Lewis. Alina Lewis.
Hi.
Same question to you, why do you wanna be on CEC 20?
Yes, thank you, well, I got to know CEC 20 and all of you who are on it through the work I did last year around the new literacy curriculum. So in attending the monthly meetings and using the CEC as a platform to share some parent perspectives on the new curriculum. I got to see firsthand how and why CECs are so important as a place where parents and communities. Can voice concerns and really be part of the local conversation about education. And in that really short time, I also saw like very concretely how CECs can actually affect change at the district level, so I saw that with the example. Right when I started coming to the meetings with the middle schools and then I saw that with our own experience with the literacy, the literacy stuff. So this was a really important education for me as someone who had a lot of experience working inside of the system as a teacher and admin. But less experienced as a parent working on the outside of it. And so part of why I wanna join is that I think the CECs play a really important role in representing parent voice. But for CEC 20 in particular, I really appreciate how culturally, linguistically and ideologically diverse the, both. The CEC and the larger community is, I see that the community and the board members have really diverse views, oftentimes you don't all agree. But at the same time, I was really inspired to see how all of you show up every work, you commit to the work, you commit to having these conversations, you all try to keep the kids' best interests at the front of mind even when you're disagreeing. And I find that really inspiring, I think it's what like local democracy can and should be and I'd love to be part of that, I'm not naive about. The challenges that presents, but again, I think. You all on the CEC and the community showing up, having those conversations is very admirable and very inspiring and I'd love to be part of that conversation in both the wider district and with the CEC, so thank you.
Thank you, alright. The same question to you Sarah Cooley Cordara.
Yep, that's it, um, thank you.
Why do you wanna be on CEC 20?
Yeah, so kind of to piggyback off of what everybody else said, I think that it's a really privileged way to support and be part of your community. I, I do volunteer and I'm part of the SLT and the, I'm the Title I Parent Coordinator at. My son's public school, but I feel like I wanna have a wider reach and a wider knowledge of what's going on in the education. The education community around me, I know what's going on in the school that I'm a part of and that my kids are a part of. But it's really important to me that everybody in my community is receiving a great, fair. And sustainable education and I think that being part of the CEC will help me in, in. Being in part of those conversations, I apologize, I have two little boys fighting behind me, so if you hear that. They're a little, little bit distracting, but. Really, I just think it would be a privilege to represent families and parents. And to use my voice to speak up for, for education.
Thank you.
Thanks Tamara.
Okay, back to you. To the third question.
Great, thanks Elizabeth, and I just wanna. Take one look, I, I think I saw. Reem come in and then leave. So, and if there's any candidates here that we haven't called on, just please speak up now, we just finished question two. Okay. So for question three, we'll go to our, our other Vice President John Ricketton, so John, take it away.
Good evening all candidates and all CEC members. Sorry guys. So we're gonna go back from seven, right?
Start at the top now, start with the first one, yep.
Sarah Cooley Cordara. The question is, what would you do if you were chosen to serve on the CEC?
So I can promise that if I was elected to serve on the CEC that I would be present and I would be open-minded and I would be. I would come with knowledge, but also come to learn about what's happening in my community. I can also guarantee that I will share the knowledge with the community, I'm really good at outreach and networking and I feel like. Someone else mentioned it, but sometimes parents, especially parents who speak other language or culturally different. Have trouble getting the resources and the information that they need and so I feel like. If I become part of the CEC, that that will be something that's very important to me and I will continue to work for.
Thank you so much. The next question is for Alina Lewis, do you need me to repeat the question? Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay. Yeah, you just said it. Thank you. So if I were elected to serve on CEC 20, I think the first thing I would want to do is just listen and learn more about the community. So I do understand that my own point of view and perspective is by its nature, partial. And there's a lot I don't know about the district that I would want to learn. And the way that I like to learn stuff like that is just talking to as many people as possible from as many different schools as possible. And I love talking to parents and teachers and students and just hearing about their experiences. So that would be the first thing. The other thing would be, I'd also want to build relationships with all the CEC members. So trying to understand where all of the members are coming from, what their concerns are, and what unique strengths all of you guys are bringing to the table. I think a thing that's valuable about my perspective and which I would want to bring is a focus on teaching and learning. So I do have a background in education, but specifically on teaching and learning and curriculum. And so I want to bring a clear and consistent focus on teaching and learning to the CEC's work and be able to lend my experience and expertise to that. And the other, I think someone mentioned policy before. I also have both an interest and a background in ed policy. And I'm particularly interested in how policies that are made at a higher level are then experienced by the people on the ground. And so I'd like to play a strong role in those policy conversations and in particular, in understanding how DOE or central policy is impacting District 20. And then be really a citywide advocate for policies that do work for our district and meet all the unique needs and strengths that our district have. So relationships, learn more, teaching and learning focus, and a policy focus are the things that I would want to bring to the CEC. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ken Lee, do you need me to repeat the question?
I chose to, I was on CEC 20 because I will train the kids. More, well, sorry. Okay. I chose to service for CEC 20 because I think the kids need more safety and also we need to kick out of booties. In the school would be, we want all the kid be happy. It's to stay in school. All the parent would be, you know, feel comfortable, you know, to work. And we want to help more parents to, you know, to keep, keep the kid in the school and stay there more time, like after-school program for all the school and let a parent and have a time to find the full-time job and, and make enough money to then spend. That's all I want. That's it.
Na Lin, do you need me to repeat the question?
Uh, no, thank you. I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe parents in workplace are critical part in their children's education. If I chosen to serve the C, I will do my best to advocate for our parents and children and empower our parents in navigating the school system by leveraging the experience I have gained from the serving the school community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Neng Ying Shi, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. It's okay for me.
Thank you.
If I were chosen to serve on CEC, I would try my best to do my duty. And I want to get our voice heard and make more connection between the parents and our community. I want to have a chance to make a, just a little change rather than just accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mandy Yu, would you like me to repeat the question?
Hi, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
So the question is, what would you do if you were chosen to serve on the CEC?
What would you, I would do my best to help the CEC. And I would like to do, try my best and help the parents, help the families and the students and the community. And I would like to do what, what, whatever the parents, the families and the community asking me to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Because she left. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, she was not here.
Okay, and I think that does it for the three questions. And I don't see our other candidates here. We are, bear with me one second. We are going to offer, for candidates who are not here tonight, we will offer a makeup interview. We'll reach out to the ones who are not here and see if any are available. So look for an announcement. If, if we put that together, look for an announcement on that coming soon for the candidates who are not here. And then the next step, the, you know, is to vote. And we will do that at our regular monthly calendar meeting next Wednesday, November 13th, starting at 6:00 PM. The vote will be later in the night. And just for everyone's information, there's seven votes needed to approve the candidate. So seven CEC members vote yes on one candidate and that is how you get approved for the seat. I think that's all the announcements for tonight. Thank you so much, everyone, for applying. Really, it's very much appreciated. It's, it's honestly, it's, it's a great experience. It's, it's good work and it's interesting work and sometimes it's even a little fun. So we're, we're happy to have you and we're looking forward to having a new member join us. And we will be in touch. Look for the information about the meeting next Wednesday for the vote. And if there's any questions, just please email our CEC. You should all have the email. It's the CEC20@schools.nyc.gov. So again, thank you and everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.